Welcome to the February 8 Northwest Local School Board Meeting. Please join me with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Slankford, can you take roll call please?
Mr. Neto.
Here.
Mr. Neto.
Here.
Mr. Yurtemora.
Here.
Mr. Kiefer.
Here.
Okay. Agenda item 8.1 Legislative Update.
Let's start off with the Senate and the House both named new education chairs in the legislature. A person of note is the vice chair in the Senate is our very own, one of our very own representatives locally, Louis Blessing III. And then there's quite a few recently introduced legislations. The House introduced 18 and the Senate introduced 10. I'll just read off a couple of the highlights. And in the House, there's House Bill 1 introduced by reps Jamie Callender and Bryce Sweeney to create a new school funding formula. House Bill 2 introduced by reps Carfagna and Stewart to establish the residential broadband expansion program. That's important to note because there's also a Senate Bill 8 to also establish a residential broadband expansion program to expand broadband access across the state in both urban and rural areas.
You know, Matt, on that note, I just remember our last but not to me, we were talking about that, that the schools across Ohio are only using 29% of that available broadband. And, you know, there's so much more that, you know, can get out there for our kids to use when they're not on school property.
Right. Yep. And there's also a House Bill 40 to waive state testing requirements for the 2020-21 school year, require the Ohio Department of Education to seek a federal waiver from testing and provide extensions from state report cards and other provisions related to test results. Senate also, this one, I think, quite a few people. Senate Bill 23 to expressly allow the use of cameras for images and videos of illegally passing a stopped school bus and establish a civil penalty when a driver who illegally passes a school bus cannot be identified. And a lot of the other ones just have to do with various requirements due to graduation and promoting from grade level and, you know, making exceptions and having to do with the COVID epidemic. And that's all I have there.
Todd, anything else?
I think you pretty much covered it. It's very important for that broadband to get out there because we're not just talking about urban areas. I mean, we still have Wi-Fi widgets that are available if a parent or a staff member needs them. But if you look at rural areas, it's, they just don't have access to it. There's not even the lines that are going out to these homes that get them. So this is getting all the providers to step up and run the lines actually down the roads to these houses that need them. So it's easier for the homes to request them because what you run into is it gets tied up in the provider and that they request the service to be run to their home and then it's really difficult to happen. So we've got to bypass that to get it into the home. And then it's like Jim said, then they start using it at home. But the tie-up is getting the provider to actually put it in there no matter who the provider is.
Do we have any idea how many homes in our district that affects?
We were, we, our principals check with each and every home. The first thing they check if something's going on and they're not seeing work being depleted. And we're not seeing that it's a Wi-Fi connection because we can provide them that gadget if they need it, a hotspot for that, and we're not seeing that as an issue. So we feel like we're in pretty good shape there.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Matt. Okay, next is the Student Achievement Liaison Report.
Okay. Let's see, we have Hebra and Guerra, a Colrain High School senior, Lindsay Rohrig, a Northwest High School junior, and Michelle Mancini, a Northwest High School senior, have all been nominated for the AG, I'm sorry, AJC Cincinnati Simon Lazarus Junior Human Relations Award. The Lazarus Awards honor outstanding student volunteers of all faiths who have demonstrated a passion for making a community a better place to which to live. Nominations for this prestigious award have been submitted from dozens of public, private, and parochial high schools throughout greater Cincinnati and northern Kentucky. In April, at the virtual Simon Lazarus Junior Human Relations Award Ceremony, one junior winner, four junior finalists, one senior winner, and four senior finalists will be awarded cash prizes and recognized for their exemplary volunteer accomplishments. All student nominees will receive a book and a certificate in recognition of their achievement. Schools making nominations will receive the same book for their libraries inscribed with the names of their nominees. So we certainly want to wish those three the best of luck. We also would like to congratulate Trinity Robinson. She's a Northwest High School senior for being the winner of the 2021 Mamie Earl Sales Scholarship Award from the YWCA Greater Cincinnati. Robinson was selected because of her academic excellence, community service, writing ability, and extracurricular activities that distinguished her as a role model for young women and future leader. Robinson will be awarded a $3,000 scholarship and will be recognized at the YWCA Career Women of Achievement Broadcast that will be aired Thursday, April 22 via WCPO. Additionally, Robinson will be paired with a YWCA Rising Star Coach who will assist her with her transition from high school to college and beyond. Congratulations, Trinity. I just wanted to add, I know this is a tough year with the pandemic has certainly thrown us a lot of curveballs, but here's a perfect example of how our students are still rising above and just doing excellent things out there. So this is just a, a small, lost my train of thought, small word, small group of, a small example of what's going on with the students in our district. So again, congratulations, good luck to the three, four, and hopefully we'll have some good news in April. And Trinity, great job and good luck to your future too. Thank you.
Anything?
No, I don't hear anything tonight.
All right. We don't have anything, so we'll go into any reports from any employee organizations? Nope. Community comments. I have a couple of community comments here. My glasses untied. Good evening. I just wanted to say thank you to all of our residents who submitted community comments. The Northwest Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to listen to the Northwest Local School District's residents' comments, suggestions, concerns on educational issues. It is important to remember that the board conducts our meetings in public, but the meetings are not public forums. The intent of the meeting is to allow the board to complete business, the needed business. Per our policy, each submission will be given three minutes to address the agenda items of any topic during the community comments. However, no more than 15 minutes will be devoted to public participation unless the board votes unanimously to continue the discussion. No response to the submission will occur from board members or district administration during this time. Once the 15-minute timeframe is over, appropriate follow-up by district administration may occur at a later time if warranted. So we have three submissions. The first one has come from Lauren Tapphorn, and her comment is, why aren't there plans for Colrain High School to offer face-to-face learning and switching classes in the school building by the governor's recommendation of March 1, especially since the staff will start vaccinations on 2/10? And please explain how the current in-person learning model is deemed successful since many students, including our honor and AP students, are failing, not to mention the mental, social, behavioral impacts that have drastically risen. And the next comment is from Cindy Reddick. What's your data to show your remote in-school and remote at-home model is in the student's best interest? How does your model prove that your employees are more safe when your percentages are no lower than the other school districts? CPS has partnerships with Cincinnati Children's Hospital and Cincinnati Health Department to make all their decisions regarding their return to in-person learning. Who is Northwest Local School District partners in making decisions on staying remote and what is your data to back up this decision? And the last comment comes from Maria Ballard. Did Colrain High School teachers move up in the vaccination line because they agreed to in-person learning by March 1, 2021? Remote learning inside a school building is not in-person learning. Private schools have figured it out. Why can't you imitate what they are doing? These kids are never going to recover emotionally and academically. It is devastating. What will it take to get them back to face-to-face learning? Thank you. I know that Mr. Bowling will address a lot of this in his superintendent update. And then if there's any other feedback that we can give you, we will follow up through the administration.
Mark, can I read one additional comment from Lindsay Creasy that she wanted everybody to be aware of?
Absolutely.
So this is for those of you who are watching the board meeting. When you go onto electronic school board, she wanted to make you aware of how to submit a community comment. So as public viewing remains virtual, our board is providing a new method to submit community comments. We have created a forum that will allow our communities to submit their comments to be read aloud at the board meetings. Individuals who have a comment about the agenda items can fill out and submit their form to be read. This decision was made to continue our effort in extending our ear to listen to the voice of our stakeholders. A link to this forum will be included on board notices, will be on social media, and a link can be also found under the Board of Education page on our website. We encourage our stakeholders to continue to share their commentary and feedback with us.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that moves us to 11.1, the adoption of superintendent consent items.
Yes, thank you. Under adoption of superintendent consent items, you will find personnel items, which are resignations and retirements. You will find vendor contracts, all of which were budgeted for under federal funds or under our general budget. You will find many donations. So we are very thankful to Blackboard, Chris Heather for donating $5,000 to Colrain High School. Side-by-side, and I don't know how you measure their donation, it's over $50,000 in books to our students. Paul Etta Crowley for $1,000. Rumpke for over $5,000 to Northwest. $5,000 to Pleasant Run Middle School. And $5,000 to Taylor Elementary. And to Linda Wilburn for her donation to our schools. So at this time, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the adoption of the superintendent's consent items as listed and are very thankful for all the donations that we received.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments?
Just want to echo what Todd said. There's a lot of generous donations and no, no donation is too small. We certainly appreciate everyone that's on this list and that has been on lists in the past and that will be on lists in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the school consent items.
I think we missed an item, or should I have included student services? I have student services for the school year. Wanted to make sure you guys knew that was included.
Like the calendar?
The calendar was in there.
Yeah, I read that.
Do I have to do something different?
No, so it was included, so.
Okay.
It was information last night. Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, fiscal items.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, Amy.
First, tonight, we have the to dispense with and reading of and approve the organizational meeting, the tax budget meeting, and the regular meeting minutes from January 11 and our work session from January 25. We have our financial report from the month of, for the month of December. Our all-funds balance was $67.5 million. Our general fund unreserved balance is $28.5 million. Our revenues are on track at 48% at the end of December, and our expenditures are on target at 47%. So we're doing well for halfway through the year. Our weighted average return is up a little bit to .75%. So this is increasing a little bit, but we are exceeding the benchmarks if you look down through our investments. And the list of monthly bills for the month of December were our routine monthly bills, as well as we had some student and fiscal software, some textbooks, legal services, various bus parts, and some pandemic supplies, and also our auxiliary and grant payments. Then we also need to accept two grants. To approve, accept, and appropriate, we have a school safety grant and also the SR2 of $10.8 million. Both of these grants are restricted, so we will follow the restricted guidelines for our expenditures. And then we need to accept the Minute Certificate of Estimated Resource as approved by the Hamilton County Budget Commission. This is what they send back after we approved our appropriation resolution in December for $180.5 million for our annual budget. So with that, I ask the board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions? Amy, the restrictions that you talked about on the grant, just for clarity, that's, they have very strict guidelines that says this is how the money can be used and things like that, correct?
Correct. General funds unrestricted, and so we can use it as we need to for operations. Grant funds come with restrictions, we have to follow the grant guidelines in order to spend the funds, and then we have to report how we spend the funds so that whether it's state or federal, and they'll make sure we're staying in compliance with it. Otherwise, we have to pay it back.
Super. Thank you.
Thank you.
The vote passes five to zero. Next item is student services item. It is our harassment, intimidation, bullying report first semester for the school year 2020-2021. It is for information only. Attached, you will find harassment, intimidation, bullying report for the first semester. Look it over. If you have any questions, please let myself or Dustin Gering know, but this is required that we report it at the end of first semester and then also at the end of the year. Numbers are very low.
Still checking on it, still checking in with our kids virtually and in-person, but numbers are low for this year. End of what we're doing.
Sure. For obvious reasons. Okay, next we move to 17.1, the superintendent update.
Right, so obviously, the big topic has been what's going on with the governor talking about vaccinations. Also, CDC's recommendations for returning to school, and then if you're into sports and if you watched the beginning of the Super Bowl last night, you had the first lady and the president talking about returning to school. So I wanted to talk about what we've been discussing internally in our office. This is an everyday conversation. It eats at us, just like it's eating at some of our parents, but there are some really widespread opinions on this. Some in favor, some not in favor, but it is not something we take lightly and it is something we discuss on a daily basis. We met from 12 to 1 today to have more conversations about it, and we continue to discuss it daily. So there was a strong message sent by our governor, or has been since January, and now the CDC going around about the vaccination and the goal of getting everyone back in school by March 1. I just want to clarify a couple of things about the message. The CDC is now even saying that the vaccine is not the important piece of returning to school. Their message is schools are such a safe place and following great protocols that they feel it is safe to return to in-person learning. But what they are not clarifying is they are referring to 50% of the schools nationwide who have yet to step back in school since March of last year. So 50% of the schools nationwide have yet to step back to in-person learning. In Ohio, Governor DeWine is referring to the 40% of schools in Ohio who have yet to step back to in-person learning in Ohio. So when he talks about March 1, getting them back to in-person learning, that's basically who he's talking about. And when he's talking about returning, he's not saying it has to be full in-person, everybody back. He's talking about a hybrid model or a small class size model. And if you want to go back and watch what some of the reports that are coming back from the CDC and the president and the first lady themselves is, small class sizes with HVAC systems that can clear the air so it is safe for our children to come back. Some of that comes with a lot of cost. Right now, in our models, if you know what's going on in our middle schools, our high schools, and our elementaries, we are limited class sizes of anywhere from 16 to 20. That is not reality of what we are in a typical school year. Usually, we are anywhere from 25 to 30. Some of our high school classes will go 33, 34, 35. We were able to do that because at the beginning of the year, there was a choice given by a request from our parents to have the choice of in-person or virtual. And when we started, 65% chose in-person, 35% chose virtual. We've also done surveys at the midway. And at the midway, around 68 to 75% of our parents and students were in favor of the current model. But if you look at our high school results, 50% of the parents were not in favor of it. They didn't like it, didn't think it was what they wanted, but 50% do. High school principals, in collaboration with their staff and in collaboration with us, made the determination to stay with this model. Couple reasons came with that, just to explain it. Vaccinations do start Wednesday. After that, we are getting Moderna, so it's a four-week wait before we get our second shot. So March 10 is the scheduled date of our second shot. 10 days after that, the shot is effective. So that takes us up to March 20. So we're now back to March 20, and we were also told Friday in a conference call with Greg Kesterman, Hamilton County Health official, that even though our teachers have the vaccination, that if they are in close contact with a positive COVID test, they are still quarantined for 14 days. Doesn't matter if you have the vaccination or not. If you're in a close contact with a positive COVID, you are still quarantined for 14 days. That doesn't help the situation much. It protects them, it provides a nervous safety barrier, but the bottom line is we've been able to keep our schools open because our teachers have had less contact with students because of our cohorting models, and we've been able to stay open more and have less quarantines because of that. The other thing is that leaves nine days of school as a possibility in March. So then you get to the month of April. The first week of April is spring break. That leaves 15 days of possible school in April. April is testing. Testing for the state federal testing requirements. So with almost every kid in our schools testing, you have half-days, you have partial days. We have to pull all staff because you're only allowed to have so many kids in a testing room. You have to spread them out. The test can take anywhere from two hours to three hours to test. There's not full day of classes. So the organization of that is very, very difficult. So the schedules at our buildings change. Some of the kids are allowed to come in half-days. So the month of May is basically testing. So yes, we did get a vaccine. Yes, we're officially safe, May 20. So now we've got nine days possible in May, and we've got 15 that are all testing in April all over the place. And so that leaves us May. Well, May, spring, kids are squirrely. Our seniors' last day is May 7 because they get out early. They don't have to serve as many days as our undergrads do. If you look at how we assigned students at the beginning of the year, there is not the reality of our virtual kids being in the same place as our in-person kids. They're on different curriculum pacing guides. They're not at the same place. So to bring them back and intermingle everybody at the same place, you're not at the same place in Algebra I. Whether we like it or not, we had to supply ADA accommodations for teaching staff. Some cannot come back and are not allowed to come back and be in-person for instruction. So we would have to have class sizes that would get around 35 or 40 for some in-person learning just because of a lack of staff. We would have study halls that would have to sit with 50 or 60 of them because we would have nowhere else to put them. But that doesn't say that we haven't looked at different ideals and different suggestions, and we will continue to look for different ideals and different suggestions. So it's difficult to just come back and run a seven-bell day. Again, 35 to 40% of Ohio schools haven't been in-person learning yet this year. Nationwide, it's 50%, and that's why the governor and the CDC are stating, get the vaccination, get kids back in school March 1. But again, they're talking about those kids who have yet to be back in school. They're not talking about Northwest Local School District. We've been back in since day one. Maybe not the way everybody wanted it on the high school setting. I think elementary is pretty much exactly how people thought. The folks who are maybe upset in elementary are the ones who maybe moved into our district late or enrolled late, and then by the time they got here, we, we have older buildings. We can't go over 20 in these buildings. Right now, we have elementary kids sitting three and four and five feet apart. There are no more rooms to squeeze kids in there. And when we get those tight rooms, we lose our teachers because they're quarantined because they're too close to the kids.
Todd, I got a question.
Yes.
You gave that example of Algebra I, there's a remote kid and then there's a kid doing the cohorting. Are those kids at the end of the year going to be at the same place? Or are they going to move on to the next year where, you know, I could be two chapters ahead of Joe if we were, if he was remote and I wasn't? I mean, how are you going to make sure those students at the end of the year are where they should be, you know, to get through a particular subject?
So it's the teacher's choice on what parts they teach. There isn't a specific order, but if they, if they know what they have to complete by the end of the year, they will have covered everything they had to in Algebra I. What we can control is did the kid do the work they need to do? But yes, if they've stayed with the teacher and done the work virtually and in class, the teacher didn't have to go the same order in history, didn't have to go the same order in the math. They can get to the same.
But they will get to the same spot.
Yes.
We know that for sure.
We know that for sure.
And then how are these schools, I don't know, like one of the letters you just read saying, how are these private schools and these other schools, how are they all back? You know, everybody's back under one roof doing their classes?
Well, I, I know for a fact that, I talked to other superintendents who are neighboring districts, and there are a lot of days they've had to close. There are a lot of weeks they've had to close. They take large groups of students and sit them in the cafeteria or sit them in the gymnasium because they don't have staff to teach them.
So they just sit there all day?
They just sit there and they are using a computer to do their learning, just like our kids are in cohorting.
Okay.
It's not the best, but I think the one piece that I agree with the parents 100%, they miss the social interaction. But what teenager doesn't? And, and I applaud our kids, they miss their teachers. They do enjoy seeing them. And the part that our kids were not prepared for is that you don't necessarily want to learn science. Or, Joe, not to hurt your feelings, you may not necessarily want to learn history. But you've had that teacher your whole life go, hey, come on, let's go, let's get going here. You don't have that at home, or you don't have that in a cohort room if you're just sitting there. You have nobody to push you. You're on your own pushing yourself. But that goes a long way for us. So what we found out is that our students have learned how to self-advocate for themselves. They've had to learn critical thinking skills. They've had to be able to adapt. They've had to learn how to self-motivate. They better have confidence, and some don't.
What about these kids that don't have that, that are failing? I mean, I know we got summer school. I mean, how many kids are going to be in summer school? Is it going to be 20% more than, say, normally? Or 30% or 50%? Or what is, what's that looking like?
We don't know yet. It's, it's going to be a large amount, but it's not just Northwest Local School District issue. It's, it's a Hamilton County, it's an Ohio issue, it's a nationwide issue. And so I'm on a BAC committee that is looking and has requested, per what Matt said, to cancel state and federal testing because why would Cincinnati Public, and that's what they're fighting right now, why do we want to come back to school that we haven't had our kids since last March and test them for a month and a half? What message are we sending our kids? And so it's the same thing if we bring our high school kids back. Let's bring them back and let's test them for all this time and come on a reduced schedule. And that, that becomes the tough part because they miss the social interaction. They want to change bells, they want to high-five, they want to see kids, they want to interact because that does help them. because that does help them socially, mentally. And it does inherently make them confident. It does make them feel good about themselves. So we worry about that, and it's tough. But as we get closer to looking at this, we are closer to a college model than anybody else. If a kid's going to go to UC or Xavier or Ohio State, anybody who's gone to those schools, you sit in a chemistry class or a 101 citizenship class of 150 kids. You pay attention or you don't, but you can learn online and you can catch up and do what you got to do. That's what's happening in a cohort. Only issue here is, though, we can request a teacher, Colrain High School Northwest, they'll stop by, knock on the door, pull you out, talk to you. Or they'll zoom in and meet with you. But that requires you to self-advocate for yourself.
That requires you to send them an email or talk to them, say, hey, Todd, I need to talk to you about my history class, I don't understand this. They can make an appointment, they can talk to the teacher anytime?
But, you know, we haven't worked on that skill set, and that's what this is, and that's the problem. So we have to get our kids to collaborate online. It helps prepare them for future careers, college, growing, future jobs. Cohorting helps develop independent thinkers, requires time management. It helps them be successful in balancing a job, a school, and career. Athletes, I mean, all of you have either played sports probably or have a kid who does band or sports, think about how their time management skills are. I go to school, I maintain good grades, I participate in either band or a sport, and I work a job. You've taught them skills that they'll never forget the rest of their life. Well, now that I'm sitting in a cohorting model and you've taken away the musical part, you've taken away the sports part, I don't know what to do with myself. That's going to cause emotional issues more than anything else. So it's trying to work on that aspect, too. And you're in the middle of a pandemic, so you want to do things on the weekend, and you're locked in, because we're telling you, do not get in the car with your two best friends. That's not healthy. Wear your mask, do what you need to do. And the bottom line is, we're only in school for six hours. They've got 18 hours of the day to do what they need to do, but you're kind of locked down during that time, too. The socialization piece is tough. Overall, as we stated above, it was a collaborative decision that we're still revisiting. It's driving us crazy, just like it is the parents. We want to do what's best for our kids, but man, it is frustrating when the state give us some leeway, get rid of the testing, which there's no report card, they've already told us, we're not going to give you grades. Then why are you going to make us bring these kids back and waste 15 days in April? And even more in May with makeup testing. We already have remote students whose parents are saying, we will not allow them to come to school because they're scared to death for them to be in school and take the test. So it's affecting us that way also. But I do want people to know, we're meeting with our principals. We are giving them our blessing to get back to some normalcy. The performing arts, which you asked about last board meeting, Mark, we are going to present on that on the 22nd. What do we need to help band, orchestra, performing arts, anything to get them moving forward? We've asked them to think about having ceremonies in-person. Show cards, had performances on a Sunday, had five shows, 50 people per performance. It went great, it went fine, no issues. We've had craft shows, as you know. We've told our schools they can have academic awards, just do your spacing. We've been at 15% capacity all year for sports. We can do 15% capacity for anything they want to have, whether it's grade level, academics, anything they want to do. If we're going to have kids signings, then let's do some things for that and invite people in for that. But we have to do something to recognize our kids. Do we need to revisit the decision on prompt? Do we need to look at what can happen for graduation? And I know there's a lot of push out there for getting us back to a seven-bell day, but all you have to do is look at the graduation survey that went out to know where people are. 50% wanted, I want a big graduation in the stadium, but 50% wanted nothing to do with it and wanted only eight people on a stage by themselves. It is split directly down the middle of both high schools. So that right there tells you, there is a big difference in the opinions on COVID and what they want for their kids. And I think that's what we've seen from the get-go. Some believe in COVID is real and there are some issues, and others do not. And it's the same thing we're seeing on TV with our politicians. It's the same thing we're seeing out in grocery stores and others, where people have masks, don't have masks. But we are listening, folks. We are hearing you, we are reading your emails. It's digging a hole in my stomach, I can tell you that, because it bothers me that for one minute, your kid's not emotionally sound and having a tough time. And we're meeting daily on it. I mean, you can ask Daryl. It's eating away at us. And we're trying to come up with an equitable solution of what's best for all, but we do understand we can't meet every need and we can't make everybody happy. But the way the state's laid things out, by the time the vaccination is 100% safe, that's March 20th. And that doesn't leave much time to do anything with state testing. Now, if we can get some changes, and there's three bills, one in the House and two in the Senate, that are asking for waivers for all testing, that would be tremendous and give us positive stuff. But it's also, how do you bring them back and make it meaningful? How do you bring all these high school kids back and get some true learning going?
So Todd, are you talking specifically just high school and the elementary stay? Or is it?
Yeah, elementary, I don't know how we change. Our elementaries are your asymptomatic kids, K through 3, preschool through 3. Our preschool teachers, good lord, kids try to keep their mask on, they do the best they can, but they don't.
Sure.
It's hands-on, kindergarten's kind of hands-on, first grade, second, third. There's no more room in our elementaries. Monford Heights is busting at the seams, Colrain L is busting at the seams. There's just not a whole lot of room there. Middle schools, teachers are changing. I'm seeing some great things going on there. I'm talking basically high school for the only change that's a possibility, but even that's tough because of where we are. And these are our kids who can best advocate for themselves and speak for themselves and are having success. Now, according to the emails we're getting and some you read tonight, some are not, but a lot of our kids are. And some of you have kids in our high schools.
I have a couple comments and questions. So another thing important to note is, some of these other schools that are returning to in-person, they're returning to a hybrid model. Two days a week, two days a week, fifth day, you know, off anyway, so off three. And that's just like public schools doing that. Is that what Middletown's headed towards? One of our other GMC?
Hybrid model, and then you had Turpin High School, who just changed their quarantines that if we're sitting next to someone, you have a mask on, I'm not quarantined. And they had to shut down for a week because of too many kids contracting COVID. So the minute they changed their rules and regulations for when you're quarantined, it backfired, and now they've shut down their high school for a week.
And on the graduation surveys for both high schools, how great of a response did you receive from the seniors? Would you say 50% were for, you know, a large crowd of 50%?
I think.
Were?
Three.
What percentage of senior parents responded?
I think there was 200-plus at Northwest and 300-plus at Colrain. And Jack's graduating class, he told me today, was about 480, and Joe's looking at about 230.
So a pretty good response.
It's a pretty good response.
Right.
But it could be responded by several people, not just one parent per family. It was both parents and child.
Can you share some of the issues of what we're facing with the residents watching? What the issues are with graduation currently as far as locations and?
Yes, so graduation, we are scheduled for Mallett Hall. And so we have been in constant communication with Mallett Hall. And the last conversation we had with them, they told us that it does not look very good, that we will be allowed to have it up there. They currently have shut down parts of their campus. And their advice to us was to look to have it elsewhere, that they did not see their venue allowed to be used for graduation. So we are now looking at outdoor graduations at both high schools, the stadium at Colrain High School and the stadium at Northwest High School. We did ask about the football stadium at Mallett, and it is under construction, and that colleges are not interested in our football stadiums being used either because of the concerns with COVID. So we would be looking at our own facilities. Obviously, 475 would not work because of the 15% capacity rule. So we would have to break up the graduation at both schools depending. But right now, if you look at the data, it would depend on how many wanted to participate in the in-person versus the graduation in the auditorium. So depending on how many would want to do one or the other, we could have one or it may take two. And they would be looking at a Saturday graduation.
Okay, thank you.
So can I ask one question?
Sure.
Todd, so your proposal is that the state forego state testing for the kids, both elementary and high school?
Proposal by BASSA and OSBA is they, for this year, forego it.
What is the feeling from the legislature? Are they in line or in step with this proposal?
Depends on who you talk to, but they are, the legislators are the ones in the Senate and the House who did put the House bill and the Senate bill together that did ask for that.
Okay. And the other question is, what about the AP testing? Because that's national.
AP testing will go on, it's non-negotiable, and our kids will have access to it to take it.
I talked to one of the community comments that I read, they asked, what agencies are we getting guidelines from? Could you speak? I know it's Hamilton County.
I'll probably turn that over to Daryl. And probably Dustin and Heidi would be better for that.
Well, I'd like to ask you a question, Mark. Are they asking what type of data we're using for our guidelines?
They wanted to know what agencies are giving us information for us to make our decisions. I know it's Hamilton County Health Board.
So we're talking to these every week with?
Oh, so it's Greg Kesterman, Hamilton County Health Department, 100%, who is tied in directly with the Hamilton County Mental Health Services and Children's Hospital. We are also part of the multi-district COVID huddle team that meets with Cincinnati Public, Milford, and 20 other school districts.
And then when they, just so, understanding.
And we will respond to all three of those in-person.
Okay, so if, say, Greg Kesterman said, does he give suggestions or are they mandates?
Anything we would like to do, we submit a plan to him, and everything we've submitted has been approved so far. Now, when it talks about how we attend school, that is 100% up to us.
I have two things. One, for Amy, it sounds like, obviously, summer school, there's going to be more students than normal. So I'm assuming that's going to be more staff. How are we budget-wise with that? Can that come out of any of these grants? Because?
Yes, the S R 2, $10.8 million will help us with closing the achievement gap. So if we need summer school, if we need remedial classes, if we need tutoring, any of that can be spent through the federal grant.
Excellent. And then just a point I wanted to make, March 20th isn't a magic number anyhow, because if there's any teachers that are quarantining now because a student was in their class or whatever, they're not going to be able to get their shot come Wednesday. So who knows when they're going to get rescheduled and then get rescheduled for the other ones? So realistically, it's not like March 20th, which would be 10 days after that second booster, everything's going to be back to normal, because we have staff that does not want to come back. And if they have medical, whatever they need from their doctors, we can't make them come back, correct? So it's not just a?
Even if they have a signed contract to teach?
So we would have to go through an ADA process that would look at what accommodations we could provide? And then if we can provide accommodations, we would. If we went back to a situation where we needed them in a classroom, then they would have to exercise a different right, which might be if they're in LA or on a medical leave. But there's a back-and-forth process that through the ADA.
And how long does that take?
It doesn't take long. It's just whatever recommendation they have from the doctor, it might be a little bit longer depending on if they update medical information. But it's really a back-and-forth conversation that we have each employee about their situation and what their accommodations are that they need, and whether we can as the employer fulfill the accommodation or not. And that just moves you further down into the calendar. So, yeah, I see.
But, I mean, my point is, first, I want to say, as a parent, I'm right there. I would certainly, I totally get it. I mean, in an ideal situation, we want school to be like school was two years ago. There's just so many things and so many hurdles that people aren't even aware of that makes this harder. So I was just bringing up the point of the shots. It's not an, especially hearing that even after they've had two shots, they're still going to have to quarantine. So I, how the heck are we supposed to move forward at all? So?
Yeah, Pam, to your point, that there's language out there that they're not sure of, can you be a carrier?
Right.
And though you have the vaccine, you could potentially still be a carrier. There's no definitive guidelines around that.
And we have 78% of our staff getting a shot, so not even 100%.
Right. And maybe if this was October?
78%.
So the other 22% are not getting the vaccine? So what happens? We go through the school year, we're in the summer, and we decide to come back and everybody comes in at the beginning of the school year? What happens with those 22% of those teachers?
They're ready to go. Got staff? I mean, they know what we're going to do, and they got to be ready to go. I mean, maybe it's the group that doesn't is waiting to see how things go with those who did, and by then, there'll be a lot more research or data on how things went, so.
And some of them could have fallen in another category and already got it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, no, I'm just saying, we need, we're going to have to look ahead if our staff is not going to get the vaccine and they don't want to come into the school buildings, which I understand, but we have to be proactive. You know, we're going to, if we go to open these schools back up in the fall, like?
Right, we are opening the schools back up the fall like normal.
You know, and there's going to have to be some type of date or something that they're going to have to give to us, hey, I'll be back, I won't be back, is there something like that? And then where are we with replacing that staff if they don't want to come back? I mean?
I think at this?
I think that's a whole nother problem in itself down the road.
It's kind of, very similar to what we did at the beginning of this year. I mean, we will be coming back next year, so it won't be as much choice.
And I think the biggest point is that it's the timing. Just like when you hear that calendar and you hear the end of March and then the first week's spring break, and if you even mention, well, we could do without spring break, the first thing, parents and majority of staff, no, 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 we want our spring break, so okay. So there aren't that many days that we could put kids in their seats to make that big of a difference. But on the other hand, if we rush it and then all of a sudden, we could take one step forward and three steps back and, you know, have to shut down or something. I think at this point, getting through to the end of the year, but making sure we've got summer school and tutoring and everything we need for those kids that are struggling and just be ready that come August, we're, you know, we're open back up and everybody's
When we started the levy, we thought the levy was a big lift. And it was, it was obviously critically important. But I'll tell you, the feedback that we get from this pandemic is, as you said, Todd, it's heart-wrenching. Because it doesn't matter what we do or what decision we make, there's always going to be some, there's going to be some kids that just don't, they're not going to be included, they're going to be left behind, you know, whatever, unfortunately. But I guess at this point, I don't think we can make a decision that will encompass everybody. And I think then we're going to have to focus on the kids, those that have emotional, behavioral concerns. We may have to bring experts in from outside that, you know, we turn, we make a referral for some of the wraparound services, stronger wraparound services. I think another thing is, it would be, if we see a visual timeline, a lot of the things that you shared, Pam, as you said, is behind the scenes, and people just don't understand the dynamics and the operations behind that. To actually see it like a timeline would give people, I think, a little bit more information, because it's not a matter of just flipping a switch and we're back to, like, it's so much more involved. It's so much more involved. And like, you guys know, my daughter goes to the high school. I would love nothing more than things to be the way they used to be, if you will. I don't know if it'll ever turn back to that. I think there will always be some level of virtual education moving forward, which, and Todd, the way you and I have spoke, we don't know what the fallout is going to be having kids at different academic levels, you know, Jim, as you were bringing up.
Right.
I mean, I think next year, we could get vaccinations, we can kind of get this pandemic under control, but there's going to be an aftermath next year of things that aren't going to be the actual pandemic, but there are going to be fallouts from the pandemic in several years. Yeah, yeah, it could be a generation, an entire generation. It could be a generation, an entire generation, unfortunately. Very difficult.
I just want to make one comment. During the summer, if the population is very high for these kids to make up academically, will there be an upbundling for the students to get psychological help? Because.
Yes. We are working currently with our schools. They are identifying and working with parents, asking the parents to reach out for any issues they have, for our school counselors, our administrators, or teachers. And then safeguards and anything they need can be put in place over the summer. The SRT funds are exactly like Amy said, designed for that and are in place.
So it's not going to pay for, it's not going to pay for psychological counseling? It's not going to pay for you to go and have a session, a 30-minute, 60-minute session?
That'll put support systems in place for them through our schools.
And how are the parents participating in this? Like, you know, are they, do we have any kind of idea? Like, I know we probably can't get a percentage, but, I mean, are the parents aware that they can call? I know we're sending stuff out, but with communication, it's always, you know how that goes.
Almost 100% of the emails I get were the parents are concerned about us not changing bells. They're saying, my kid is suffering from emotional and mental health issues. As soon as I contact the principal, we are aware. We're working with the counselor and we're providing support systems for the child. So it's 100% of the time that we talk to them. It's been a great thing to add to elementary counselors. They are providing tremendous support. I think you read some stories on our website and Facebook this week about the support systems they are putting in place. So it's happening everywhere, in children's home, in the schools, and everywhere else. So.
As far as the elementary, unfortunately, it's taken a pandemic to be able to do this. But thank goodness, I mean, elementary counselors have always been needed. And so at least there's a positive out of that as far as having the grant money to fund that. But I think, at least the people I've talked to, and if I follow up, you know, I think our administrators are working above and beyond to contact parents and pull kids down and talk with them and, you know, try to see what they can do, working together, to try to make things better.
I'd say Northwest has a strong wraparound program. I mean, I've worked with Daryl on a committee, not that we foresaw this coming, but had we not had these services in place, it would be a very different story, I think.
And our partnerships have just grown through the years, which have helped create a safety net and support network that we have that we can really reach out and try to work with parents. So we actually this year started doing a screening for trauma and mental health elementaries to really kind of identify students who might need help. And so our counselors, our children's home, our YWCA staff, a lot of our social workers are reaching out and making connections that they normally wouldn't have made because of the support we have in place.
So can you walk through, Daryl, like, if somebody did a survey? I know what surveys you're talking about. That comes back to the teacher. There's something that is brought, the teacher has a flag that goes up from the responses of the children. Can you walk through how that, what happens next?
So the screener we did was asymmetric to the elementary. It would flag priority levels for students based on their response to answers. And any student who was flagged with a priority one was met with in person by the counselor within 24 to 48 hours. There was follow-up with the parents. So we were able to really kind of look at, like, we use MAP for our academic. And we can see from our MAP data the health of our system. We can use that to really look at the health of our system from a social-emotional standpoint. So we can really start targeting the kinds of activities that will build the resiliency that our students need to excel, both academically and socially. So our elementary counselors have worked really hard to develop a counseling program where they are very structured with what they're doing. So our supports are only building. Our middle schools are doing the same thing. There are a lot of, with the teams, they know the kids so well. They're already referring kids to counselors, to children's home. So like I said, our support network has only grown over the years. And with the pandemic, it's just really shown us the need for it on a larger scale.
And parents that are out there, if you know something that maybe a teacher is not picking up on, please reach out to your school and give us some information. And certainly, we will provide any kind of assistance that we can provide.
The last thing I have, I want to talk a little bit about vaccinations. There is weather coming Wednesday. I just wanted you to know that we're not being mean, that we cannot cancel the vaccinations for our staff for any reason. They, Mercy will receive them late Tuesday night. At that point, they will start to thaw them or defrost them. Once they are thawed, you only have a six-hour window to deliver them. And that's noon to 5:00 with an extra hour. So no matter what the weather does on Wednesday, that'll be our window that our staff has to get here. So we'll be flexible if they're late, we'll work them in. But we just don't have an option to change it. So when they come, they got to be used. That's what'll happen and why we're going remote. So the teachers will do their best to get as much instruction in as they can prior to that on Wednesday, and then they'll have work for the rest of the day after that.
Board member comments. Joe?
No, I just want to thank the AO for their effort in trying to get through this chaotic situation. And I just want to tell the people in the district that we are trying, the board, the AO, are trying desperately to get back to some sort of normal here. And I think one of the most positive things is the staff vaccinations. So please be patient with us and we'll try to get back to the quote-unquote "normal." That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Kim?
Yeah, I just echo what Joe said. I mean, exactly, we just, if people can be a little more patient, you know, to get through this, you know, we appreciate, and everybody is working hard on this. It's not like we're sitting here not doing anything. So, you know, I just make sure everybody keeps wearing their mask and social distance and we go from there.
Thanks.
I'd like to take this opportunity to wish the winter sports are coming up on the state finals and tournaments, wish them luck. And I also would like to make a note and wish the Colrain Academic Quiz Team good luck. They have started off to a 9-1 record this year. And they are hosting Mason this Wednesday on February 10th. Mason is 10-0. So they're doing extremely well this year. Academic Quiz Team's near and dear to my heart. My son Noah was on the 2015 Academic Quiz Team. And they did well that year. You know, my son was named First Team All-GMC for Academic Quiz Team that year. I got a feeling this year, we're going to have more than one, more like two or three people, I have a feeling, on the All-Team GMC. So they're doing really well, wish them luck.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, that's exciting. I'd like to wish them good luck as well. And hopefully, we'll be able to announce all their names for making First Team All-GMC. I just, I mean, we talked about a lot tonight, the vaccinations Wednesday. Again, that's something else that doesn't just happen. Daryl, I know you've put a ton of time into it and nervous that it's not going to all go smooth, but I'm sure it's all going to go smooth. And just want to tell you, we appreciate everything you've done and everybody that's worked with you. And wish everybody to stay safe, masks, social distance. And we're going to get through this. But please know, like Jim and Joe and the rest of them said, this is nothing that anybody takes lightly. I'm sure Todd and most of the administrators haven't had a good night's sleep since this all started. This is something continually trying to figure out what's best for students. And unfortunately, there's just not a quick, easy answer. Thank you.
Thanks, Pam. I'm kind of, an element of I'm speechless just because, you know, some of the feedback that we get, I feel horrible that anybody is not meeting, getting the need that they need. We're here to solve for that, for them. So please reach out. If you or your children need anything at all, we are here to support and serve you. And then, pretty much what everybody else said, we do take this serious. This is not anything that's lightly. And it's not like there's a manual out there that has walked us through a pandemic before. The manual's getting written right now. So again, you've heard me say before, we have to show grace to one another. We have to show patience. And that's about it.
Okay. Next is executive session. The board will approve a motion to move into executive session to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official and to discuss the evaluation of the superintendent. Superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the motion to move into executive session as listed.
Second.
There's a motion and a second.
And then there won't be any, we're just going to come in?
Correct. So the vote passed 5-0, and we will break for executive session. When we come back, the only agenda item left is to adjourn the meeting and close the meeting, so there'll be no other discussion. We appreciate everybody being online. At one point, it looked like there was about 120 people participating. So thank you for joining in. And please, if you have any questions, submit them via the process that we went over this evening. So thank you very much.